Welcome to the Planning Board Meeting of Thursday, June 11th, 2015. My name is Emily Innes, I'm the Chair. I'll ask the other members to introduce themselves.
Cheryl Taggias, member.
Tim Swirwinski, Assistant Town Planner.
Michael Kelly, member.
So we have a number of things on our agenda today. I should announce first that we are being taped and broadcast. Excellent, taped and broadcast. So approval of past minutes, Tim, I believe you have distributed some minutes which we have not brought with us.
Yeah, I only have one copy a piece of April 9th and April 23rd, but they were, they've been distributed. If you're comfortable taking a vote or not.
We should probably wait because we don't have all of the members here who are at those meetings. So let's table them to our next meeting. Everybody should review the minutes that they have. Maybe, Tim, if you could just do a list of what's outstanding and we'll...
I will resend all the minutes that we've got.
Fantastic. As far as the rest of our agenda, we'll talk about the next meeting dates in a moment and have citizens speak. Under new business, we have appointments to several committees that the Planning Board Members Liaison, the Long Term Capital Needs Committee, Wireless Telecommunications Design Review, the Milton Village Revitalization Committee, and the Master Plan Implementation Committee. We will hear an informal presentation at some point during the meeting on 33 to 41 Pleasant Street, which is a possible eight lot subdivision. And at 7:00, we will start a public hearing for special permit and site plan approval and scenic road approval on 865 Brushhill Road. All business we'll discuss tonight are the articles in the process for the October 2015 town meeting, and we will continue our discussion of the acceptance of the master plan. So our next meeting dates are June 18th, where we'll be continuing the public hearing on Thayer. June 25th will be a continuation of the hearing on 333 Brushhill Road. We'll also be discussing the master plan vote and the zoning process at that date, the 18th was just there, and probably the zoning meeting. June 29th is our public workshop on zoning, so if anybody is interested in joining us, we will be starting at Fuller Village at 1372 Brushhill Road at 7:00. And July 9th is our next meeting. And in July, when the others get here, we'll talk about this, but I've had a request to move to 7:00, starting in July, so we can talk about that. In the meantime, if there is anybody here who would like to speak to us on anything in front of the board, except for the public hearing on 865 Brushhill Road, or if they have general comments on planning, we would welcome hearing from them. No citizens willing to speak? All right, we will move on. So while we're waiting for the others, we can, and waiting for the public hearing to start, let's just talk a little bit about the zoning workshop and what we need to do for that. Tim sent out an email on my behalf to all of the members, and what I'm looking for is for each of the assignments is images, because we'll be doing a survey. The technical term is a visual preference survey, but basically it's a series of images that we ask people how they feel about them, and that will include signs, which has been a big issue, of course, and condominiums, and possibly the dwelling units, the accessory dwelling units. I think we could do some visuals on that as well. We'll also be doing boards with questions on them for people to respond to. I'm looking for between three and five questions on any of the topics, so if you guys have anything that you would like to add as questions. And was that our information review?
I didn't.
You want to shut? Because if so, we can start on that. And so I'm looking for those for Friday. Images, no more than 20 images.
This Friday.
This, this, yeah, not, not tomorrow, sorry, a week from Friday.
Okay.
So...
Emily, the photographs, are those going to be on boards, or is that going to be...
That would be a PowerPoint.
PowerPoint, okay.
So, yeah, and so what you do, what we will do for that is everybody will get a sheet of paper, or probably two sheets of paper, and so the images are flashed on the screen, and people do the rating on pieces of paper, and then we collect those at the end. It's a numerical value, and then that way you can merge numerical values together and calculate what people's preferences are. So it's a standard methodology for doing this.
And then how will the question, the replies be tabulated or recorded?
Those are likely to be, and they should be in the form of yes, no, or maybe, or not sure.
Yes, no, or maybe.
Yeah, and then what we'll do is we'll probably have people put dots up, and then the dots can be tabulated. So the number of yeses, the number of nos, and the number of either maybe or not sure, depending on what the question is, so...
The visual images and the numerical grading, is that to see what is most important to people?
What is most important and most preferred? So for example, take signs, we'll probably have the blade signs or the hanging signs, we'll probably have four or five different types of blade signs, and then we'll calculate which ones people like best. Do they prefer more traditional ones, more modern ones? We'll have ones with different types of lighting on them, and then calculate it from there. And I should say the images should be very clear about what they're showing. So again, to use signs as an example, we don't want to have a picture that has a blade sign and an A-frame sign and an awning sign. It should be one at each, so that people don't get confused.
Would you identify it as well, like say, neon sign under it?
Exactly. Well, I'll probably go through and say, okay, now we're looking at awning signs, we'll have five awning signs. Now we're looking at blades, we'll have five blades.
And it's a means of sort of taking, taking the discussion out of emotional discussions about things in town.
Right.
Sort of general, like these are types of things that are out there and possible.
In fact, I should say that the images should not come from Milton. That's part of the point, is you don't want somebody picking on an image because, picking that image because they like or don't like the business. You want it to be relatively neutral. So we should be looking for images generally in this area, but could be throughout the country if those are useful images. So we can continue this in a bit, but why don't we have maybe a few minutes before we start a public hearing? So why don't the people coming forward for Pleasant Street come forward and just give us a quick presentation? Introduce yourselves.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Paul Sullivan, member, from Milton. The developer is...
Rob Salaberty from the Hanton Avenue, Milton as well.
So we're here tonight just to have an informal discussion about a subdivision that will be submitted in a few weeks for a definitive approval. And the property involves 33 Pleasant Street, which is Mr. Murphy's property, it's about a little over half acre of land, and the O'Neil property, which is 3.01 acres. And we combined the two properties to create an eight lot subdivision that will be access off of Pleasant Street. It's a 370-foot cul-de-sac. It will be proposed. It's, there's six lots in C-zone, which is 7,500 square feet, 75 feet of frontage required. And there's two lots in the B-zone, in the rear, which is Lot 4 and 5. And they're 20,000 square foot lots. The, we're going to seek some waivers on the plan. We hope that the Board would consider a 40-foot right-of-way versus the 50 that is typically We're going to maybe propose a 22-foot paved area versus the 24-foot, possibly sidewalks only on one side. And there may be an issue in the entrance, I believe it's supposed to be at a perpendicular angle to the street you're accessing, and we don't quite have that angle. There is a vernal pool on the site, and there's a 100-foot no disturber area around the vernal pool. We're not planning on disturbing that area at all. There's a house on Lot 5 that will be outside the 100-foot area, and there's no utility work or anything going in in that area there. In addition, there's a Lot 9, which is a lot in the rear, it's 32,000 square feet. It, it's situated, it fronts on a 33-foot right-of-way that goes through the horse farm and out to Randolph Ave. At this time, we're not proposing anything for that property. We just split it off separately. It is our understanding that the lot does have rights to the 33-foot right-of-way, rights to access and to improve it, but we're not proposing anything at this time. And we had a meeting with the neighbors about 10 days ago in East Milton, and there was a series of questions. Mostly people wanted to know which trees were going to be taken down. There was some questions about drainage, and, and the location of the homes that are going to be proposed, the size of the lots, seemed to be the issues that came up at that meeting. We actually proposed another meeting last night, and, you know, probably given, it's summertime almost, that nobody made it to the meeting, so it was a quiet one. But in general, you know, there didn't seem to be a lot of oppositions to a conventional subdivision going in here.
Any questions from Board members on that? So what is your proposed schedule?
We hope to meet with John Thompson soon to discuss the utilities before we finish the definitive subdivision plans. So the engineer is pretty close, you know, there's some drainage work to be done, very preliminary at this time, and we assume that, that the Board might require drainage peer review outside, so that seems to be typical pattern.
Yes.
So I think we're probably, you know, three weeks away from filing.
Yeah, about three weeks.
And just to let you know, we've started a new precedent of having a technical review done and completed prior to the public hearing being scheduled. It actually works in your favor, because we can determine whether or not the, the planning staff determines whether or not the application is complete, and there are any issues before it comes to the Board. So you should add that into your calculations and work with Tim and Bill, especially Tim, on making sure that that factors in to when you're going to submit the application.
And how long is that process? I know it's just, it's recent, does it take...
I mean, we, we like to have a week of a cushion, you know, and that sort of bakes in, like, we're going to get started on it, have some back and forth, if back and forth is necessary.
Sure.
So it's about a week. This would be my...
Yeah, so give a little extra time. We will be working on a schedule of, of application deadlines before public hearings are set up, but we haven't quite got there yet, so we appreciate you working with us. Bill, you had something?
I just have a comment that goes back to what Paul said. Although nobody may have gone to his meetings, they're still calling the planning office. They're, you know, do we, you know, when can we give public comment? And there's been several calls, and several is more than four. So the neighbors are looking at it, they have seen what you've put forth.
Sure.
And they, they are looking for more. We did tell them that, you know, yes, when they file for preliminary, you'll be notified and be posted in the paper. When you file for the definitive, again, you'll be notified, it'll be posted in the paper. So we're giving them that information, but they are interested, I don't know why they...
Well, I think what happened was, when we had the first meeting, we didn't have the butters information on the original plan that we showed the neighbors, so it was difficult. They were trying to get a sense of how close the development was going to be to their homes, most, especially the, the owners in Quarry Lane. And so that was one of the reasons we wanted to meet last night with them, because we have, you know, the engineer added all the butters to the site, and, you know, yeah, they definitely, you know, those people, they had issues of drainage and size of lots and access and trees, and, you know, typical things you would expect to be concerned about.
Well, we look forward to seeing the next step.
I have a question. This plan says preliminary subdivision, but you're not actually asking for approval of a preliminary subdivision plan?
We weren't going to meet the deadline, so we, yeah, we decided to do an informal discussion.
You're going to just go directly into the definitive plan?
No.
What do you mean, no?
No. They're here informational right now. They gave you what they have for preliminary right now.
I understand that.
They're going to file for preliminary.
Usually, usually when we have a preliminary subdivision plan, I think we, we make recommendations.
Right.
But that's not what the purpose of this meeting is. This is just them letting us know it's coming.
This is not, this is not a preliminary application for approval of a preliminary subdivision plan. And if it is, I haven't seen this plan for more than two minutes, and I, you know, I didn't get enough notice.
Alex, it's just them letting us know it's coming. We're not being asked to approve anything tonight, or even necessarily come up.
No, I understand, but when you have a preliminary subdivision, application for a preliminary subdivision plan, the Board is supposed to make known whatever issues it has. That's the whole purpose of them. And I may have issues, but I haven't, you know, I wasn't given any, any warning.
I don't have an application. This is just the plan.
Okay, so it isn't, we're not on a formal application for approval of a preliminary subdivision.
Correct.
That's all I wanted to make clear.
Yes.
All right, good.
Anything else, anyone? All right, in that case, thank you both very much.
Thank you, thanks three times tonight.
Actually, Emily, I just, I do have one question.
Yes?
On the location of the turnaround, it just, it seems pretty close to the property line, I guess on the north.
Yes, we offset it.
Yes, right. And...
It's just the right-of-way, though. I mean, the paving is going to be significantly smaller than the right-of-way that's shown there. I don't know if we have...
Yep.
It looks like it's fairly flat there.
I want to show, before I show that, is, we have a picture of an airhill view of the neighborhood, just to give you an idea of how much woods are in the back here. So the O'Neil property is here, this is Frank's house here, and his driveway is here. This is pretty much where the road is going to go in, right about here. This is Mr. Murphy's property, and these are the neighbors in Quarry Lane, some of the ones that were wondering how close the roadway would be to their properties. Their backyards are pretty thickly wooded, right here, and that cul-de-sac you were just talking about, you know, is like right in this area here. So they, there's still at least almost 100 feet of woods there, even though, I know it's close to the property line, but there's significant, all their homes are right on Quarry Lane. You know, they're much, and those lots are over 200 feet deep. So there's a pretty good buffer there. And there's only really one house here, too. There'd be one house in this area right here. So of the three homes here, they're only going to have one house pretty, you know, at least 150 feet, if not further from... So this, this is the actual road construction. So that's the sidewalk, the grass strip, and then the asphalt area inside of that. It's a 50-foot radius is required by subdivision regs, and that's what we're showing here. We did narrow the roadway down to 22 feet, but, I mean, we could build it 24, but we just thought 22 might be more appropriate. But there's, there's a pretty good buffer between those homes, but we obviously offset it because of the vernal pool, 100-foot no disturber, to give this house a little more space, so we offset the cul-de-sac a little bit.
Well, the buffer is all on the adjacent property, so, I mean, I guess, one thought would be whether the, you know, whether it would put limitations on the use of those parcels at any point in the future. Obviously, the houses that are there now are close to the street, but we wouldn't want to have undue burden, right?
Sure. The other issue back there is some sort of a muntled ledge in the back here, so, I mean, I didn't get a sense from, I think two, at least two of the owners were at that meeting, that they, you know, even though we didn't have the plan at the time, they showed them that the woods would be a pretty good buffer for them.
Okay, so that would just be something I guess I'd like to see that the neighbors have come and comment on before we get it.
Excellent. Anything else? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We are now going to start the public hearing on 865 Brushwood. This is a special permit, site plan approval, and scenic road application. The process we're going to follow is that we're going to get a report from Bill Clark on the status of the technical peer review, then we're going to hear an update from the applicant on the information that the Board requested at our last meeting. Board members will be able to ask questions on that. Then we will take testimony from members of the public, and when we get to that point, I will read the, the guidelines for public testimony, and then we will identify any outstanding items that we may need for our next meeting. So Bill, can you give us an update of where we are on that review?
I have an initial review price with a price for attending one of the hearings if required. The proposal is waiting to be finalized by the word processing folks at Nitch Engineering. They've included a sidewalk, review of the plan, supporting documentation, development of a letter in the initial review, same for the secondary review. I'll have it tomorrow morning.
Okay.
And they'll start tomorrow.
And the timing on that, how long is it likely to take them?
They will have it for your next meeting.
The 25th?
Twenty-five.
Great. All right. So in that case, I am going to turn it over to you, Ned, to give us an update on the information you've been providing us, and obviously introduce yourself and your team for the record.
Yes, thank you for the recognition, Corcoran. I am attorney for Northland Residential Corporation, which is the applicant. In this case, I'm joined by Jim Valeko, who is the project architect, Deb Keller, who's the project engineer, and Alan Arkman, who is the landscape architect. I submitted some materials Monday, Tuesday, with copies of various attachments, a memo followed by a brief memo, and have some additional details on that. Don't like, know whether you'd like to go through the memo and how we've responded to issues and questions as we perceive them, or...
I think that's reasonable.
Okay.
That we can get that content on to the Board's public record.
And I stopped by today, but wasn't able to see, Tim, I'm handing original signed copies of each of the memos that I had emailed previously, and attached to, I have copies for each of the members of the Board. Attached to the second memo is a blow-up of the very small lighting plan, which I have, we have further broken down into quadrants, and I think I need one of those back. So I think easiest to go right through the, right through the memo. So the first, there was a question as to how much earth moving is required, and do we have a calculation of the net amount of fill or to be removed or delivered to or from the site? Our preliminary calculation is that there's about 13,500 cubic yards of fill that will be added to the set on a net basis, 4,000 associated with the roadways, and 9,500 yards associated with the balance of the, of the project. We have a call into Joe Prondak to determine, from his perspective, whether we need to file for a fill permit. The language of the bylaw is a little ambivalent, and, not ambivalent, but ambiguous in terms of whether or not a fill permit is required if, if there is a special permit associated with a subdivision or similar project issued by the Planning Board or the Board of Appeals, if it's just sort of wrapped in as, as a component of it, even though we're not specifically dealing with volumes of fill. If the answer is we need to file, we'll file, we'll have a hearing with the Board of Appeals, and we'll go forward from there. Question was asked, do we need all of the parking spaces that we are showing? And, you know, we're showing essentially four parking spaces per unit, and then four sets of two other visitor parking spaces through the site. And I think the answer was, and just to confirm, that it's probably more than we would necessarily require under a bylaw or permit like this, but it is often the case that the developer is asked to provide more, particularly to facilitate visitors, and so the answer is yes from that perspective. And I think we're meeting the minimum requirement, there is nothing in any of the town bylaws that's, that establishes a maximum amount of parking. It is obviously space that's not dedicated to open space or the green space, but, you know, we have achieved, we think more than, well, we've achieved 33% approximately green open land as it's defined in the bylaw. And then another, probably 40% of the site is green when you account for all of the lawn area that is not specifically meeting the definition of open land, but becomes, really can be considered green space. We talked briefly about the need to, for a waiver of the requirement for stone as opposed to block for the retaining wall around the beech tree, especially dealing with the, with the need to preserve the, the root system for that, that tree. Question whether we had cut sheets and photometric plans for light, for the street light, street and building light fixtures. We have provided previously copies of cut sheets for all the light fixtures. There's really four types of lighting. There are two types of lighting for the streetlights, and then those three streetlights with one, it looks like it's the Providence Micro Core Medium Housing P R O V light fixture. We have the cut sheet for that. We have the specification sheet, cut sheet for the S P J 40 Craftsman Column Lantern, which is one or two columns. And we have attached to the second memo a blow-up of the, of the sort of photometric plan, and what I have is larger versions, which are actually legible, and which I'll forward to Tim, but essentially it's broken down into three locations where there is actually, where our light fixtures are going to affect. So first is the front entryway. If you see on the plan in front of you, you see the areas marked C, P, P, that is the front entryway. The light in each case, according to the photometric calculations, dissipates to zero candle power at 20 feet. So roughly the two parking, the two that are identified as P on the, on the site-style plan would be the two lights on each of the columns. On the front entryway, the light doesn't reach the other side of Brushhill Road. And the three, the, the three that are identified as C are sort of at logical locations on the site. They also, the light dissipates as you get to approximately 20 feet. And again, are really those smaller areas internal to the site. They do not go anywhere near the boundaries of the site. They are covered, as you can see from the cut sheets, they're downward, essentially downward casting, and I would suggest ducks by compliant. We did provide cut sheets for the lights that are supposed to be installed on the front and rear of the buildings. I understand that they were not able to provide photometric mapping of those, but they are at 25% of the power of the lights that are being proposed on the, on the, on the, the three streetlights and on the, on the front entryway, so that, again, they have, they're covered, they're downward casting, there will, there will be some light visibility through things, but the light will not reach. We don't believe the light will reach any of the, the outside boundaries of the property. And I'll provide copies of these, I just received these this evening, I'll give these to Tim.
And Ned, if I can just interrupt.
Yep.
All of the documents that you've provided, that the Board has hard copies of now, are up on the Planning Board website under Planning Documents. Anyone can take a look and blow them up and take a good, a good hard look at them.
And so the, we did provide cut sheets for two different, the wall-mounted lights. One is an incandescent Mission wall mount, and the other is an outdoor Mission wall mount, same manufacturer, slightly different, one for the front and one for the rear.
I have the cut sheets here.
And I did email copies of all of... And I did email copies of all of those to Tim earlier. And then additionally, we have, in addition to the point-by-point mapping, which unfortunately came in in this size, and so we've blown, we've blown it up by degree with a copy machine. I've gotten, one of the things I'm good at, is that this information is the same as that. So, we had photometric data summaries that came with it that sort of speak to that, and so we can answer additional questions that you may have, but I think, at the end of the day, what we're providing is necessary for the, for visibility on the site, but is really intended to be low-impact and barely visible unless you're looking at those lights from anywhere outside, and certainly not spilling light out into areas beyond the property.
Ned, the entrances to the residences that are closest to Brush Hill Road face Brush Hill Road, right? Those porches?
The, no. Well, yes, there are two porches, three porches that side, that face to Brush Hill Road, that have the appearance of front door, and those are lighting that are recessed.
Recessed, yeah. So, there's no, there's no surface mount fixtures there? Okay.
We're asked to provide a description and a rendering of the nine-foot fence that's proposed for the rear lot line, and that is Trex fencing. Provided information and cut sheets with respect to that. It is wood in appearance, it's, it's stable, it's sturdy, it's easy to maintain. There was a question whether we would move it, extend it to Dana Avenue on behalf of your butters, and we are willing to do that. We have a question, and I haven't asked them directly, but a question whether they would like it slightly lower, so it has, doesn't have the feeling of a nine-foot wall along the edge of your property. If you dropped it to six feet, say, that would be a preference from your perspective, we'll, we're happy to work with, with them on...
Okay.
Okay. But the answer to their question is yes, we are willing to extend the fence out to Dana Avenue. We talked about the size and location of the affordable units, and I'm just confirming that based on prior experience of this developer with D H C D, confident that D H C D, D H C D will find that the size and location is adequate and acceptable from the affordable housing perspective, if necessary, as required by D H C D, prepared to build out some or all of the finished, the basement, as a finished basement, to increase the square footage of the living area in those units. And if the board wants to make that a condition of the permit, that's fine, I would just ask that the condition be conditioned upon finding of D H C D in that regard. We talked about the strategy for raising elevations, adjusting elevations on the site. I think we spent some amount of detail on that, really based on the site topography. It does tilt a little bit from the rear left to the front with some depressions. The mansion sits reasonably high, and so in order to establish site drainage and sewer on a gravity-fed basis, we need to create some pitch to the site. And so the, so all of the effort was to minimize the adjustments to elevations, but doing so mindful of the need to build a roadway with, with sufficient drainage, to, to address stormwater management throughout the site, and to deal with maintaining dry basements so that the basements can be installed and be maintained from a dry perspective. We were asked...
I just...
Ned, if you hold on.
Yeah, Ned, I appreciate the answer. I still have concerns about how much fill and about the, the, that amount of fill requiring it to be clear-cut on the, that perimeter that you've provided. You know, the, the water table, you know, is understood. I think there's a large amount of fill, you know, across the site, and looking at the limit, thank you for doing the limit. Some of it gets, you know, pretty close to the property line, and I question really whether the trees are going to be able to be saved in there as well. So, I, I'm really concerned that we're going to end up with a, you know, 90% clear-cut site here. And if there's any adjustment, you know, if the, as was stated, I think, when this went to town meeting, that the notion of some of the buyers might be, people interested in single-floor living, is the basement absolutely mandatory? And is it mandatory in every single unit? So, so that we could look at whether that amount of fill is really desirable. I understand it's necessary for water table and basement, so I, I still have some concern about that.
I'm not sure how to respond to that, other than to have the engineers talk about it. It's the project that, that has been designed, it's the project that Northland wants to deliver. We think that it fits within what's, was specified in the, in the, in the bylaw and whatnot. I mean, it's, it is a, it's an interesting site from that perspective, but I, we've got some pretty significant experts who have done this on multiples of occasions with Jack and Northland, and with similar sites have produced results that was, that are similar to this. You know, well, well-prepared buffer woodland, maintenance of vegetation where it's able to be done, care is taken as to how it's done. So, there is a limit of clearing, but that's, I think we're pretty confident that we can live without that clearing, and that the open, the open land as defined, 33% of the site will be maintained. I mean, one of the, one of the issues here, when you're dealing with the site, is how we had, how we responded to neighbor concerns about the level and the nature of the, of the setbacks themselves. 65 feet, 35 feet, particularly 65 feet, other things had to give in order to be able to maintain that, particularly with the vegetated state. And so, there is some cutting that's happening in other parts central to the site because we're maintaining the types of vegetated buffers that are being maintained.
But this, so this drawing, right? It gets pretty close, I mean, it goes beyond the setback line. So, I guess if people thought that the natural landscape was going to be maintained within the setback line, you know, this, this indicates that it's actually not, right? So that the, while the building setback line is adhering to what was approved, the actual cut line goes into that setback, right?
Yeah, and part of that is because we're dealing with site drainage, and we have to, we have to build detention areas to manage the site drainage on the site and locations where that can be done. And so, yeah, we're not going to have 65 feet of natural wooded density, you're going to have 30 or 40 feet, and you're going to have other green space that will be incorporated into that. It will still be significant open land, it will be more manicured in nature, but that is allowed under the definition of open land, under the bylaw. You know, there is a push-pull, dealing with this development of this site, to account for a number of those different issues, and we think that we've done a pretty spectacular job of responding to all of those concerns and creating something that really, really works well for the site and works well for the area.
What's going on near Building Eight?
Building P.
Cheryl's just sort of gestured to that, but it says, see, go, so, yeah, that little bump out there? Yeah, please.
If I, if I could add, Deborah Keller from McKenzie Engineering. That's, that's near one of the natural depression that's in that location.
You mentioned that last meeting.
And so, to add, to make sure that we don't flood that area as well as the butters, we've, we've gone in there and added relief so it's tied into the site's drainage through a head wall and closed drainage down to the front. I would also add that, you know, this is the limit of grading, but Alan has shown on the landscaping plans a lot of supplemental buffer landscaping to supplement those areas so that you do have that buffer and supplement the natural where it may be lacking in, most of the time you see it in the lower stories. Is that correct?
Right. And the limited clearing, of course, is a line on the ground, the canopy will, you know, be beyond the limited clearing. We recognize the problem of looking on your canopy and what that entails, but we also know, given the layback area we need to install foundations, work around the buildings during other being erected, we have certain pressures that way. Post-occupancy, our experience is with these projects, that people like the trees if they're not afraid of the tree falling on their house. So Jack has won awards from the National Arbor Day Foundation, and we've worked with him saving signature trees, buffer areas, and the most frustrating thing is to do all that work and to be pressured to cut the tree down anyway after the fact. So we really try to, to, to find that line where we, we can save the trees safely and for as long as Jack has control of the site, and what happens, you know, after that and people's discomfort, but we really try to get the project to the point where it's stable, the trees can survive, we can do the supplemental planting, we can provide attractive, safe settings that our, our clients, our buyers respond to and aren't afraid to be doing one of that as well. That, that's always a pressure. And then, saving trees that are attractive to them. In a wooded site like this, we need a pretty sizable area to save a lot of trees and the understory. Single trees don't look like much when they're selected out. Three trees together don't look like much when they're singled out where we can save them. So we're really, you know, in the common area behind Buildings 13 and 14, we've worked to, you know, there we have an area where we can save a big lump. There are other areas where we may be close to original grade, but still we can't save that clump of any size that we may have.
What's your experience been in, the measures you take to preserve the trees during construction so that they're not damaged, their, their root balls aren't damaged?
The, Deb can speak to the exact detail we have here, but I think the perimeter at a minimum gets the, the cell fencing, the hay bale, or the blown sock. In terms of the limited clearing, then, we're kind of right out in the middle of things with the beach and with the, one of the common area, those receive more of a chain link. Do not disturb, you know, do not cross.
I would, I would think one of the important things would be that this, this line not just be vague, that, and I know there's things that come up during construction, which are going to require it to shift a little bit, but I think that this needs to be as tight to the construction of the, the buildings as possible to preserve as much of the undisturbed part as possible, recognizing you have to do the grading that you talked about for the storm. I think that's particularly on the Cushing roadside, right?
Yes.
But I think one of the things that, you know, was said in terms of the goals was to preserve that buffer, and photographs show those trees, so I do think it's important that there's an accountability, you know, for how that's done during, if it's not going to be dimensioned on the plan, then it's staked and somebody walks it and approves it before, you know, the, the demolition begins. Because I think the neigh, certainly we wouldn't want the neighbors to come back to us once things have started and say, this is totally different than what we understood from the planning board meetings. Right? So we, I think it's, it's critically important that that get as tight as possible to the construction. And I still think, I'm sorry, I've forgotten your name.
Deb.
Deb, if, there, I looked at this again, and I understand totally the drainage and the pitch and so forth, but there's some sections in the middle here. Is it not possible to save some of the trees by how you position these in the tree, and, and therefore a couple of the trees and less fill right in the center here? Because that's when you, when one looks, they're going down Brush Hill Road and they look in, that's what they're going to see, right? So, if we, you know...
Can you tell me where your, I, I just...
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah. And those two locations there, yeah.
So Buildings 12 and 13.
12 and 13.
Right.
Okay.
So when they, when they're driving down Brush Hill Road, they're going to see a piece of Building 12. They're not going to see Building 13.
I think you'll see it, but...
I don't think you're going to see past the corner of Building 12, Building 13 at all. It's possible, but that's 60, 80, it's almost 200 feet away. It's through, retained foliage along the front, it's beyond green area with shrubs and other things here. You've got the corner, you've got Building 12, and then you look beyond Building 12. I'm not sure you're going to see anything other than maybe that corner and that piece of Building 13 going right.
Thinking you'd done an illustration to show what it would look like from Brush Hill Road, is that right?
Yes.
I think I remember one, okay. If I could, if you could pull that up, that'd be helpful.
I, I would just make one comment going, one comment back. With regard to stakeout, what we typically do for construction sites is stakeout the limit of work. It gets walked to make sure that it's consistent with the plan before they put the erosion control or fence up, whatever it may be, along that limit of work before any clearing does happen. So that, that is part of our process.
Okay.
So I think this is what we think it's going to look like as you're looking sort of in the front. I mean, that's Building 12. In front of it is the mail building. This is Building 1. This may be Building 2. This is Building 11. You might see the next building beyond Building 11, but you're not going to see really anything more than that than when you look into the site.
I see lots of greenery in that image that I'm not convinced is going to be there for another 10 years.
It corresponds with the green area that you're seeing here. It's not all trees.
No, that area is all the drainage, right?
But it's still part of the open land, it's still green.
We believe there's, you have trees planted along that, and the roadway as well, and shover clover.
I think it's important to clarify that you are clearing, but then you're replanting.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
You're doing a significant...
Replanting fairly small, the way I re, your replanting last...
Which, which planting?
All of them. And I'm thinking that your replantings might have, be a little larger than what I was suggesting.
Looks from here that most of them are three to three-and-a-half inch caliper, eight to 10 feet, 10 to 12, a lot more at three to three-and-a-half inch caliper. Shrubs ranging three feet to four feet, couple of the others, a couple of six to eights, eight-foot heights.
Six to eight doesn't really, I think you've got to wait for a while before that's going to help.
It depends on the view. It depends on, you know, if, if you're blocking something up there, you're blocking something here.
The idea is to create a layered effect.
I'd say exactly, we, we do want a layer. We want something up high and then...
River bridge.
Right. Then down low too. So it's what we try to...
Retaining as much up high as we can and filling it with...
Filling it in the low.
Low and mean, you know, medium to create a layered effect, some being evergreen and some deciduous, so that some's... some deciduous so that some's creating a permanent year-round visual barrier.
So am I right in reading that infiltration basin, that'll be sodded and then it's going to have trees around it, is that right?
On the area, on the berm, yep.
And that's going to be river birch that you see when... coming in?
Right. And river birch, I think, for the mixture of the river birch, shrub replanting, and then punctuated with, I think, plane trees as part of the street tree rhythm.
I'm sorry, what's the street tree rhythm species?
Plane, right there. I think the... you know, you look at the street tree list, because we don't have a street that, you know, lines up against an avenue, we've not gone with a single species. We've very varied the species so that a group of buildings that kind of form a little cluster, before it turns, will have a common tree tree moving, and then you go down the corner, it'll be a different character. So we've tried to match that with the relationship with the attention area, for instance, a plane tree, a water-loving tree. Closer to the mansion, we've gone with something more formal and stately like an elm, resistant , for instance, I think we spec where that kind of character, that upright, base shape form is appropriate.
Okay.
And then in terms of the overall strategy, instead of... we get little glimpses of it in the planting plans, so for the planting plan around the Duthie House, you can see what's happening across the streets. Same thing with the typical unit planting plan, but that level of planting has to be sort of projected across the site since we did that and layout of your planting influence each building and each building. So you'll see that the buffer planting plan and street tree plan shows the large material. Street trees change behind the home. And in the typical unit plan, add an additional structure to the buffer zone, just we anticipate that the buffer zone planting, even if it doesn't all occur at once, 100%, it will happen in advance of the construction of the units, and so the smaller plants will come through the final planting of the building.
Where is... I, you know, looking for the landscape plan and I don't find it.
Section four, Alan. Fourteen through nineteen. They're in section four of the binder.
And then you've also got a key for the different species.
The key to produce well, like a 11 by 17.
But we did supplement with eleven... with eight and a half by eleven.
Right, yes, which we received in our...
Yeah.
By email and in our packets at the table.
Which sheet, Alan, do you think shows the plantings around each?
Around each unit. Typical handling of the two or three unit types, depending on how you count the unit types, happens on sheet sixteen. We're dealing with the new construction, so we're providing both foundation character planting along with privacy planting between the units so we know where the kitchen windows are and the opposing kitchen window, for instance. You see on building two, on sheet sixteen, that the interior unit gets a little front garden, a little expanded walk with a three-sided courtyard sort of treatment. Then the next sheet, sheet seventeen, shows the planting around the Duthie House. And then not everything at the surrounding buildings, but bedlines. You see the trees, but the beds haven't fully been fleshed out.
Are there any existing trees around the Duthie House?
No, the lawn terrace and stone wall have been overgrown with volunteer species, things that pop up and grow into walls.
Is it twenty-four inch tree shown on the existing conditions plan, is that right?
Don't have the existing hand.
There are a number of big trees shown on the existing conditions plan. Last time I said I'd like to know how many of them are going to remain, and I... from what you've written, I gather that you're not going to tell me.
Well, we have told you.
Like the zero?
We've shown the limited clearing line.
I understand that, but, you know, that's clear... that's the limit of clear cutting in what you're saying. Everything inside the limit is going to get cut down. Well, how about saving some of the big trees and not clear-cutting them?
So since you have the large trees identified on the existing conditions plan, can you overlay that now on the limit of clearing plan? You should have all that information out of CAD.
We could.
I think that would answer some of the questions that you're getting.
Sure.
Well, the trees aren't going to survive the level of fill. Which becomes the next question.
Right.
So that's one of the questions or one of the reasons why I keep asking about the fill, and I related to the trees. It's because, you know, as I said, trying to find something which is some... gets us a little bit less, you know, at least when you're coming in with those two buildings. So that's the reason I keep bringing up that section of it. The only one that's being saved inside that cut line is the forty inch, right here.
Well, I... you know, my view is, I think that's fine that you can't save any of the trees, but I really would like to know why you can't. And I hear you're saying that you want to have a gentle slope so you can drain it. And then Cheryl suggests that a gentle slope doesn't have to be over the entire site. It would be nice to save a couple of big trees, even if you have to build a wall around them so that you can fill. And if you can't, it would be good for you to explain to us why you can't, because it's going to take a number of years for these trees to... how tall is a three inch caliper? A three inch... is it three inch caliper or a...
Three to three and a half. I mean, we're specifying this as minimum typically north and south, it's four, four and a half.
But how tall is a three inch caliper?
Twelve to sixteen feet.
Twelve to sixteen? So it will take a few years. It would be nice to save some of the stuff that's been growing there for a hundred years or fifty years or seventy years. However many years these trees are old, we really should try. And if you can't do it, you can't do it, but at least explain why you can't do it rather than saying you wanted a gentle slope for the drainage. I mean, you can have a gentle slope and then you can...
I heard you.
I think also something that would answer questions is... and Cheryl had mentioned this for another project, what... that we were looking at is a site section, perhaps to show us the slope more clearly and also indicate where the fill is actually going. And that might answer some of our concerns or at least allow them to... us to express them a little bit more clearly on that, so...
In addition to the fill, each home has a water sewer, electrical, gas.
Right.
There's not a lot of room out in front of any building. We work hard to place street trees in a satisfactory rhythm amongst that angle. And that is, I mean, I think in the whole, the aggregate of the, you know, set of goals, starting with the nature of the community process that led to, you know, the shape and the focus of the site plan, down through the pressures of laying in sewer line that goes in the right direction all the time.
But you have been... you've mentioned your process, which is you move along and then you cite the buildings as you go along. And when you, you know, of course, if you've cut everything down, then it would make no difference, but it would seem to me that your citing decisions could possibly be made with some thought on what's there.
Well, I think...
If it were there, which it won't be since you want to clear-cut it.
I think the best we can do is come back with some sort of an overlay of the trees that are identified and show where they are specific to the site plan and, I mean, and explain why.
And then maybe, yes.
But I think the answer is that perhaps with the exception of one or two, the rest of them are probably gone. But we'll... we'll have that for you at our next meeting.
And then I think again, a site section showing how the topography is... if the topography is one of the driving forces of how the site layout is happening, then a couple of site sections that show how that can happen would be useful.
This way, you can see how it's...
We'll see if... we'll try to do that.
Great, excellent.
There is some sort of a section.
So I think that's covered seven and eight for the moment, so...
So we will respond... eight, can we provide full-size plan if we've done that? Can we survey the open space? I think the best we can do is what we've done is an open land plan that shows the area. Similarly, building pod plan that shows the area that is how the building pods are defined. I'm not sure we can survey them today with meets and bounds, particularly a meets and bounds plan that may get adjusted by six inches to a foot, to two feet as the site gets built. And I would hesitate to do that because we may be back here having to amend a special permit because you better move something twelve inches or eighteen inches, and it should be generally as shown at minimum. And at the end of the day, there will be an as-built new site survey, and there will be as-built with building pod surveys that each unity and be part of the final as-built set of plans that will be delivered to the building commission as part of the closeout of the project. So I think that's what we can do, and I think what we've attempted to do, and somehow we came up with an extra sort of a half of a percent of open land. I'm not sure that... how that happened, but we've gone from thirty-two point to thirty-three point in open land.
How did you determine that if you...
I don't have a layout.
If you don't have a layout, I mean, as you guess, you've got thirty-two percent.
Well, they probably calculated it based on the...
They calculated the area simply by...
Oh, you...
You know, we've got... this is the open land plan. All of this hatched land is defined as open land. We took a conservative approach to defining the open land. We did not define all of the green area between buildings. In many cases, you could. We took the more conservative approach. We simply took it as the land that is clearly open, left in a more natural state or is incorporated into sort of more general, you know, the area of the beach tree, the area of the drainage here, the walk-through to the terrace and all the area, the hockey stick and all the area around. That's a fundamental calculation of opens... of open land as it's defined in the bylaw. We did not... we're not taking credit nor attempting to for all the other green land that is common area because they're not included within the area of each building pod, and no one will have a private right of access to sort of the green areas. But it's part of the common area that will be maintained by a community association and be mowed, et cetera. With respect to information regarding size of yards, decks, and patios, there is no... there are no yards. We do show patios and decks attached to each building pod. Each unit will have an outdoor living space, and they're shown on the plans. Can we provide a list and samples of building materials? Jim has provided a list of building materials and a... titled exterior material and product specification sheet with a photograph, sort of a photograph attached that identifies what each of the building materials would be as with respect to each of the dwellings. Some of the units will have stucco on the lower level. Some will have, particularly in response to the most recent request, the units facing out to Brushell Road will have cedar shingle above. All the shingles will be cedar, all clavering will be wood. Stucco will be... stucco where used, and other materials will be AZAC or other composite materials to stand our nice winter weather.
Where do you see the stucco being used?
So on the first floor, we're using it out front to have the first note of that concert, but now the neighbors have been terrific in the whole process. So we accept that challenge of then a few buildings, particularly those a couple around the stucco existing house, would have stucco on the first floor. If you see on the drawing, the sort of a belt course at the second floor level, a little pulley hang, belt course, that would define the difference between the stucco above and the shingles above.
The reason I ask is I just would like to be assured that the affordable units will not be treated different materials than other units.
No, the exterior...
Identical columns, rails, everything.
Yeah, and that really... that would affect the value of other units inside the development. If the materials don't work and they don't look the same and have the same feel, then it really affects the overall value. They are smaller, they are...
So we're...
The interior finishes will be a little bit different, but...
So in this drawing, it looks as if you're showing the stucco at the base for all of them. Is your intent to kind of mix it up?
The note probably says, and if it doesn't, I'm sorry, stucco or clavering.
So it's going to be a mix though, right?
It's going to be a mix, and I would say in general, seventy-five percent will be clavering and twenty-five percent of the buildings will have some stucco.
All right.
There's some that would be there so that the existing house doesn't all of a sudden, what's that?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'd actually just address that for a minute. I live on Brushell Road. P House is stucco. There are quite a few stucco houses on the street. The first house that was built in the former Boyle Estate is stucco. My house is stucco. So there's a fair amount of stucco on the street. I don't think it's atypical, and I'm not at all troubled by it. So I think it's very consistent with what's going on on the street.
I noticed that house at the bottom of Boyle Estate today. It's a gray stucco with a shingle.
Correct.
Second floor, and it was very attractive. So I think originally that was the intent, was to sort of mirror some of those other...
Blend.
Blend. So because, you know... And so because, you know, Brush Hill Road's an interesting road from one end to the other. There's a real mix of old and new and modern and different materials and-
No, I, I think these are reattractive structures, and I have, just wanted to make sure I understood what your intent was, that's all.
We were asked if we would place bollards in front of the hockey stick. I think they didn't show up on the detail of the plans. We are proposing to place bollards on, at the front of the hockey stick. It could she- Mowed up here, and in response to pushing road neighbor concerns, we are prepared to eliminate the walking path. And I thought it was, it was interesting, a comment that was attributed to me in the Times this evening about the materials that would be cleared. But there was some suggestion that I said we put in poison ivy. I think I said, may have said that as a joke in response to something that David did earlier. I think Tim Herning was the one who was going to be paid to install poison ivy. But, you know, we will be planted, and it will not be an attractive nuisance as a result. I did have one conversation briefly with Joe Lynch yesterday as we're talking about the notion of a technical review. He has requested, it's fairly straightforward condition, that we would grant easements to the town for the water line. The town wants to own and maintain the water line, and that's, that's fine, that's easy to do. So there'll be an easement granted through the hockey stick. And otherwise, for the water, he doesn't want anything to do with the sewer, but he did want the water. So he wants to know that the sewer's going to work, that's part of the technical review, but he didn't want to own. Talked about groundwater elevations, we've talked about site fill and those things. Type test pits were located on the existing conditions plan. We've talked about the notion of minimizing the grading with respect to natural depression and other things, and we will at least endeavor to find, to provide a section demonstrates One of the issues, and I think it's really one for a conversation with the board, deals with the notion of how to treat the opening to Brush Hill Road. If you look at the, at least sheet fifteen of the landscape plan and the- I can't hear you guys, I'm not saying no. So if you look at the rendering, currently, the opening is about seventeen feet. And the pavement really comes up almost to the edge of the wall on each side. I pasted again this afternoon, and it's about seventeen feet. In response particularly to the fire chief and his requirements, we're proposing to open the wall to thirty-two feet and have twenty-two feet of pavement. So there's plenty of width for both fire truck entering and another vehicle in the paved area. You know, worst-case scenario, the car broken down on its way out, and the fire truck has to pull in, it's got to be able to get by. Separate question is, what do we need to do to treat the either side? And so one of the issues is, do we have a sidewalk that comes out to Brush Hill Road? There are no sidewalks on Brush Hill Road. There's a very narrow area between the pavement on Brush Hill Road and the wall, it's within the town's right-of-way. Another conversation with Joe Lynch yesterday to the effect that he doesn't want anything here that would damage a plow, or could get damaged by a plow, if a plow is plowing on Brush Hill Road. He doesn't want horizontal or sloped granite, he doesn't want cobble, doesn't want any material that's within the town's right-of-way. We can put in, I suppose, some just hard dense pack that would not be damaged. And then coming from inside, we're proposing cobble strip across, I think that's six feet wide, and that really acts as the reminder to people that they have to stop. We're not proposing a stop sign at the entry. And so, and, you know, do we, if we push the sidewalk at least away from the front to that six-foot, you know, what do we treat it with? And we can try, treat inside our, the property, we can treat it with a, with a flush cobble. We do want some sort of a hard surface here because people will, will miss the, miss the edge and rut the grass area, and that becomes a maintenance issue and a nuisance issue, and don't want to have to address that over the long term. But I don't know if the board has ideas, Tim has ideas, others have ideas about what to do other than to make sure we have the adequate width for the roadway and that it otherwise appears and works.
I appreciate the comment about plow. I do a lot of plowing in my business, and I understand it can be frustrating. I am a little concerned to hear that we wouldn't have anything there. Certainly, it, it causes a lot of, as you point out, the rutting on the sides of the road. The bituminous curbs up and down Brush Hill are constantly destroyed in the spring. So I appreciate the lack of concern, the concern about the plows, but it certainly makes a mess on the road for the balance of the year, and we get runoff in our yards and everything else because of the lack of a curb there. So I'd be in favor of maintaining some sort of curb. I also would suggest that a vertical curb would actually serve to protect the wall from cars that are coming in and maybe miss the turn, and this, the curb would stop them from hitting the historic wall. I'm also troubled about not bringing the sidewalk out to Brush Hill Road. I appreciate the lack of a sidewalk on Brush Hill Road, but I also don't appreciate the lack of a sidewalk on Brush Hill Road. And to the extent that someday there could be one, I think it would be important for us to at least accommodate that possibility. Whether we actually have to connect isn't probably not important to me, but certainly I would want to preserve the option geometrically. I, I, I think you do need something, if you're not going to have a stop sign or even a stop line, certainly there has to be something there to remind people that that is not a place where they can just pull out. That's a, a bit of a straightaway on Brush Hill Road, I think. So I would be a little careful about not having any kind of indication there. Those are my comments.
Yes, Hawks.
Along with the sidewalk, even though this development is being designed for older people, if there were children, I was watching the forty B hearing, and the school buses don't go into private property. So there needs to be, the side, these kids need to come out on the sidewalk and have a place to stand while they wait for the school bus, if there are kids. But I mean, there has to be an assumption made that there will be children, and there has to be provision made for them being safe while they wait for the bus.
I'm a little concerned about the termination of the sidewalk when it gets to Brush Hill Road. How is that, you know, you've got a sidewalk coming out to not meet a sidewalk because there is not existing one. So I think the treatment of how that's done needs to be carefully thought out. I, I agree that some provision needs to be made for the possibility of children or for the possibility of someday a future sidewalk. I also agree that having something at the end of the drive to indicate that this is not just a straight-out and drive, you do have to stop, makes a lot of sense.
Would there be an opportunity to put in a, on the end of the sidewalk, some sort of ADA ramp down to the road? That would, that would help with the concern about the, the plows as well, by bringing it down to the height of the road and also just create a logical termination point.
The distance, if you look at the sheet fifteen, the end, there is a fair distance-
Okay, oh, I see, I see. Yep, I see.
To the, to the cobble. Cobble is intended to serve as that stop reminder.
Yep, right. I'm just suggesting it should be retained. Right. At least stay is what I'm suggesting.
And then, you know, it's possible, I suppose, to transition from a sidewalk down to a more level surface that comes towards the roadway, but doesn't meet, maybe doesn't meet the town layout line, and serves as a, you know, that can be an at-grade cobble surface. Provides a safe place for kids to wait for a school bus if necessary, provides a safe way at least to come in and out if someone, a friend is dropping someone off if they're going to walk in, it's a place. But it wouldn't necessarily be a sidewalk that comes all the way out and meets the edge of the town's layout.
Yeah, I think what you have now where it's sidewalk to mulch is just too drastic a transition. So there needs to be something that moves between those two.
But I do like-
I'm sorry, Emily just, Emily, Cheryl just pointed out, as you look at the top of this graphic here, it appears that they're basically bringing it down, sort of slowly ramping it down, and then as you say, it sort of terminates it. Yeah.
Concrete to mulch.
Concrete to mulch, so.
Yeah, I mean, the profile is one thing, but it's also the transition from one material to the other, so. And especially when you don't have that sidewalk material already on that road, so, you know, is there a way of dealing with that? So that's some-
Again, though, I think it does provide a place for someone to stand, and it distinguishes it from where vehicles might be.
And you could probably end that sidewalk where it terminates against the mulch. There's, you, you could put in a vertical granite curb there again as well to sort of create a landing and then a step back up to the landscape end.
Yeah, you could do that. You could transition it with the same cobbles that are going across the road, so there's a change in materials there. But something that looks a little bit more suitable for that particular road might make sense.
Sometimes on a-
I feel like they don't see what you're talking about.
When you say for curbing-
I'm just suggesting as the, as the ADA curb, sort of, as the ADA ramp sort of ends, the grass begins.
Begins on Brush Hills, which is okay.
I'm just responding to your drawing here, then you could bring it back up again, it would be-
That is-
What transition is happening there, basically? I mean, we know what's there now, but what could happen there that's not the straight concrete to mulch?
Where you're not just going to have mulch and dirt on your sidewalk.
Right, exactly.
What I'm saying, would be afraid of it, this transition's down to grade.
Yes.
That comes around, and it meets what's currently, within the town right-of-way, is just essentially a two-foot wide or three-foot wide dirt area. I would be hesitant to introduce a vertical curb, new vertical curb here.
It's not there yet.
Because the plow is going to-
What, relative to the vertical curbs and the plow, I'm trying to think, sometimes within developments like this, maybe like a rotary seat, like a forty-five degree vertical piece of granite.
You taper it down flush.
It makes a curb, you can put a sidewalk to it, but it's a forty-five rather than a straight vertical curb.
Straight out, that is correct.
Then if you have plows, the plows would just ride off of it.
That's right, right.
I'm just responding to Joe, Joe Lynch's comment that he didn't want anything-
Right.
-within the town's layout. And the town owns the property that's outside the wall. So we can transition something to that point, but I think I have to defer.
I think we can go back and have that conversation with him because he's thinking of a curb.
No, he's thinking, he didn't want, he did not want, he did not want slope. He specifically talked about sloped, he talked about cobble. He said, we get complaints from people, and when the plows come and hit it and they rip it out, and we've got to go put it back. He said, don't want to have to do that. It's a maintenance burden for the town, though they didn't, the town does not want to assume.
Well, again, if it was a forty-five degree piece of granite, they're going to rip it out.
I'm just, I'm just seeing.
So then that's part of the discussion, yeah, exactly.
Responding to. I mean, we're happy to treat it the way it needs to be, best it can, but I would, would kind of respond to it.
Well, he should work his magic and come up with a solution.
So I'm just noting it's quarter past eight now, and if possible, I'd like to start getting comments from the public roughly around eight-thirty, so.
So I think we're close.
If not earlier.
We've talked about the fence along the rear of the property and the, and the fence on the Moses property as it comes out to Dana Avenue. We're happy to install a fence. We talked with the, with the Moses about the height, the particular height that they would like to see. I think my last significant comment deals with the issue of a truck haul road and a haul route. I know there was comment that we heard from neighbors about going into High Park, coming up the backside of Dana, turning the corner. I think that does a couple of things. One, it introduces all the truck traffic to a handful of Milton residents who brought down Dana, number one. Two, I think it's completely unenforceable because the city of Boston, I would tend to think, would not allow that volume of heavy vehicles to come through a tight road. Those roadways in, in High Park are tight, most of the parking is on street, and so those trucks will be coming and weaving up the hill. I don't think it's enforceable, and I don't think that the town ought to impose a condition on this development that it forced the truck traffic to take a route that's just not going to work. I think, you know, the, the most likely routes are to come in on one thirty-eight, to come down Ponce Valley Parkway, come up onto Brush Hill Road and left into the site, or go to Atherton Street, Bradley, Bradley Road, at the, at the fire station, at the light, take the left, come down Bradley, take the left and right into the site. Those are the two. I think we can, they'll, they'll vary, I mean, they'll tend to vary those routes, but I think those are really the two routes that are available to the town, and I would strongly urge the town to not force the development to use a plan that is, wouldn't be acceptable to the city of Boston.
Any other questions from board members, either on what we've heard tonight or what you had a chance to look at over the last week or so?
Over.
And then we'll be moving to-
One issue that is a naughty issue because is, of course, the fact that this is a dead-end layout with only one, with only one entrance. And we have, for years, talked about how much we don't like that sort of a configuration. And I had always thought that we would solve it with a ten-foot gravel path down the hockey stick as the emergency exit to use, and it could have a breakaway gate on it. But it does seem to me that the, this is a significant amount of roadway with a dead end, and as a precedent, it basically gets rid of our concern, our prior concern with dead-end streets. Because it looks like it's about eight hundred feet long, seven hundred feet from the Brush Hill Road to the back of Routh C.
Yeah, that might be right. Yep. It's about right.
I guess I see it totally different than you do. It's interesting. I don't see it as a dead end at all, except for that last little link. It's a hundred feet to a big loop, so the fireman and anyone angry with your vehicle has two ways to go, almost immediately.
Now, that is, that is, that is-
I don't see that as a dead end.
That is, you know, that's the explanation how, that we would have to use, that it, it breaks off and that the dead-end part of it is, is only this little stump, and we could have a tractor positioned there to push the broken, whatever it is, away.
I, my, the only comment I would have to that is we did, we met specifically with the fire chief to talk about that issue. He's completely satisfied that- He's completely satisfied that the access to, the circulation works from his perspective. There are three hydrants on the site that are interior to the site. He was concerned that maybe we would be, he would have to access one of the hydrants out on Brush Hill Road. That's not the case. There's the first, the first hydrant is just as you get to the intersection of Road A and Road B. And then there's two on either side of the loop. He is satisfied that he can come at it from either direction and did not think it was at all necessary to utilize the hockey stick. I understand why it might be a good idea, but, you know, we're certainly comfortable with Chief Grant's decision and recommendation on that.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
All right, so seeing no other questions from the board members at this time, we're going to move to the public hearing portion and hear from the public. I'm just going to remind you all of the process. So I ask that you wait to be recognized before speaking, that you come to the table and give your name and address, and the applicants will, applicant team will move away from the table, that you speak into the microphone. When you're done, please leave the table. All questions or comments must be directed to me, and then I'll direct them back out again. And speakers may not cross-examine the applicant, board members, or other speakers. In addition, we've had two requests for an email and a letter to be read in the record. I'll hold those till the end so that we get to hear first from the people that are here. And do I have anybody who wishes to speak? Guests, please come forward.
Tim Kernan, 642 Brush Hill Road, president of the, oops, Neighborhood Association. First of all, I'd like to say that as an observer to this conversation, I appreciate the depth that it's taken, so we appreciate that. At the last meeting, I promised to bring to you some written comments, which I have here and will pass around. I only have six copies. I ran out of ink, which is typical when you're trying to rush out the door and have something ready. It clearly gives you a hard time. So my apologies, I can get more copies or I can send an electronic copy if you'd like. I might as well just read through this. I don't wanna take the time, if you'd like me not to, I will not.
If you sort of summarize, that would be good, yeah.
And I think the two things from, from this conversation tonight. Number one is the entrance design at Brush Hill Road. I'll just read this because I think it's important. Brush Hill Road is a scenic way, and we asked the developer to redesign the proposed entrance such that it contributes to the scenic classification of the road. And Ned, I apologize, did you get a copy?
No.
Oh, do we have an extra copy?
I'll share.
I can do that, yeah, yeah. If we as neighbors, butters, developers, and boards of the town do not seek to maintain a standard in keeping with the scenic character, then the scenic character becomes degraded and the classification becomes pointless. Brush Hill Road has been designated as scenic. We are the stewards of that classification, and we need to do all that we can to maintain the expectation that that designation carries with it. Specifically, the elimination of the granite curbing requirements. And as a side note, I don't know if the board is open to granting a subsequent design on that. In other words, let the design and the application go through as it is with a stipulation that once the time comes when this needs to be designed, the board and the Neighborhood Association, the developer can work together to fine-tune it because it seems to me there's some creative thinking that could go on here to solve the problem, meet everybody's needs. If we had the time outside of this deadline the board is imposing here, I'm sure we could come up with that. And I can give you a couple of suggestions as, as we go along here. The last page of this document, I've provided you with several photographs of additional driveways to developments up and down Brush Hill Road. And if I can remember what they are, I will describe them to you. The first one is the Low Estate. And you'll notice there's no, that the granite curbing on the left there is drainage and not sidewalk. So again, there's no sidewalk there. The second one down is the entrance to the Wakefield Estate. Now, I realize it's not a high-volume development, but it's a wide-open entrance to Brush Hill Road, and I want to show it to you. Again, no curbing. The one below it is the Brush Hill Road entrance to the Milton Healthcare. No curbing. The second-to-last one is a private entrance on Brush Hill Road. I won't say that the, that the design is, is to everybody's liking, but again, no curbing. It's just a private entrance. And the bottom is a private entrance to a series of buildings or a series of homes up on about, I think it's 1400 Brush Hill Road. There's five or six houses up there. Again, this is a very old entrance, no curbing. So I think that it's really important to, as you look at this entrance, it's really important incumbent upon you and all of us to come up with a design that's in keeping with the scenic character of the road. And, and hopefully these drawings will help you do that. Continuing on the need to keep the entrance designed properly, the width is, is just too wide. I realize that there are safety issues. There was a recommendation, or I thought I read something about 22 feet, and I hear today it's 32 feet. 32 feet is a huge, huge opening. As I note here, it's, it's equivalent to Logan Airport 4L runway. Is what we're trying to do here. When we were working with the Boyle property on 685, we tried to get them to bring that width of that down. And we did, and that has yet to be designed, but it's down to 18 feet. I realize it's a little bit different, but still, it's narrow. It's a little more in keeping with the, with the development. The view from the driveway is, is critical. I know you're on that. I will leave that in your hands. But as I, as I said, imagine at the last paragraph, imagine if you will, the project is complete. And in your mind, if you erase all the units from the site, then the entrance becomes a majestic entrance to the historic DuPuy Estate. All that is visible through the driveway is an island of dense landscape and material which sits at the fork of the drive as you pass through the pillars of the driveway. This is the image that we'd like to be able to create. Make this first units, make the first units appear as if they were just dropped in there. And I think that you understand that, and I think you're trying to accomplish that. The presentation of the front homes, I think you understand that. It's critical to us that those present a front and look as if they've been there forever and don't stick out as, as back doors or side, sides of buildings. The, the last issue is the construction plan. I realize that pushing the traffic onto Dana Ave is, is a trick. There's gotta be a way to minimize the traffic on Brush Hill Road, Milton Street, and Bradley. Coming down the Ponce Valley Parkway, which, you know, I think that's problematic. There's enough traffic there already. I've received a number of calls from some of the neighbors that live around there. They're very concerned about the traffic that's gonna come through on Bradley and on Milton. So, and I believe that you've heard from those folks as well. That's it. I, I do wanna say that I think we're all very fortunate to be working with a developer who has been very forward in maintaining a, a good, healthy, constructive conversation with the neighborhood, and I'd like to thank them for that.
Can I just ask for a clarification, Emma?
Yes.
Tim, are these your comments or are they, are they the Neighborhood Association's comments?
I compiled the comments and a couple of us reviewed it before they go, but these were taken from a meeting that we had with the developer prior to his submission of the plan. So the, the issues are coming from the group. Maybe some of the specifics are mine.
Okay, thank you. Great. Thank you very much. Anybody else who'd like to speak? Don't be shy. Now's your chance. All right, well, I'll go through these two emails, one email and one letter. You all have the email in your packet. The letter was delivered to me today, and I will give it to Tim for distribution. So I'm not going to read word for word, but I will summarize them. The email is from Nancy Reed, and she is worried about the number of cars that will be added to the roads for the development. So she's noted that there are 150 spaces, parking spaces, and what will the amount of traffic do to the road? She mentions Brush Hill and Bradley Roads specifically, and she's concerned about the safety in what is, quote, in what is a scenic, almost rural area, and what are the plans? From Anthony and Roxanne Musta, Richard and Samara Tilkin, Mark and Sasa Panerisi, John and Deborah Duggan, and John Talbot and Dor Bagnall. We have, they're noting that their road has just been paved, and they're concerned about trucks going down the road. These are all on Milton Street. And they're worried about the truck site, the truck route to the site, and note that Dana Ave would be preferable and that, they urge the planning board to ensure that restrictions on the route are part of the permit. So, anybody else wishing to speak? If not, Ned, do you have any response? We could pass that to Tim for distribution. Thank you.
With respect to volumes, I think the 36 units, perhaps the 72 vehicles within the units. We did submit a traffic impact assessment, the conclusion of which was that the volume of trips on a typical day, 264 vehicle trips on average weekday, 132 entering, 102 exiting, can all be handled safely and reasonably within the Brush Hill Road and the surrounding vehicles that would not undo a burden.
And Tim, is that traffic impact assessment that is on the website for people to review?
Yes.
It's section nine of the binder.
Section nine, okay, so.
It's not.
Okay, great. So people watching at home should look for that.
And again, just as, with respect to the residents on Milton Street, I understand the concern of everyone in every particular street as to it's a short-term, relatively short-term impact, but it is an impact. And as I said, I don't think the, those who live on Dana Avenue, even in Milton, ought to bear the burden of this volume of trucks. And I don't think that a, that a truck route that forces trucks through a fairly tight neighborhood in Hyde Park is enforceable and I think would be subject to enforcement, if you would, by Boston police as trucks come through that neighborhood. So I don't think it's, I don't think it's possible to enforce a traffic, a truck route that takes trucks through a neighboring municipality in a tight neighborhood.
And do you have any comments on the comments that Tim Kernan made? Which were broadly similar in many ways to comments that the board has already made.
Yeah, I, well, I think it, what I'd like to propose, certainly that, you know, the board is gonna be accepting comments from the peer review analysis. We've got a couple of details to respond to. I think we are, I would suggest that we would be fine with some sort of a later review by the board on the final plan for the entryway. But I, but I would urge the board to be prepared to close the hearing and issue conditions. If one of the conditions were that the, that the entryway needed to be re-presented for final review and approval by the board, I think that we could live with that. But I, you know, I think we've done a pretty good job and we're kind of, it's one of those situations where, you know, harking back to when we were trying to do the building at Two Grand Avenue and, you know, what was the final look of the exterior elevation and what materials were we using? And were we flipping coins to break ties on the votes of the board? I mean, it was, I, I think that's one of those details that can be worked out. I don't want that to hold up the permit. And there's a lot of different concepts and ideas that might be difficult for us to develop in a short term. We can take a stab at something for the next meeting that will at least show a different concept, but I.
We've got to provide for something, and we want to provide for something that's attractive as possible, even if it gets reviewed again, because if it doesn't get reviewed, that's what's gonna get billed. So we are going to want an entrance that we are satisfied with.
Then I would ask the board to try and achieve its own consensus tonight as to what they think, or by the next meeting, as to what they think that ought to be. Otherwise, we think we've designed something that's fairly attractive, and it works. It works from the perspective of roadway access. It works from the perspective of public safety. It works from the perspective of, I think, an attractive opening. It deserves, replicates the wall and the area where the wall has to be removed. I think it does all of the things that we need it to do, so.
May I ask a question? Specific to the width of the roadway that Tim mentioned, can you tell us about the conversations you had with the fire chief, possibly with the police chief? And this relates, I think, to Alex's comment about one entrance in and out. I mean, this has to serve the, because it's the only entrance. If a vehicle's coming in, a second vehicle has got to be able to get by. So what is that actual roadway width minimum in order for that to happen?
22, we, we.
We're significant.
We widened it to 22 with their recommendation for that sake.
That was their recommendation?
We, you know, we don't have technical comments from town engineers, but we met on several occasions with John Thompson, Joel Lynch, other members of the engineering staff, and with the, with the fire chief. And we met specifically to talk about the range of issues relative to the site. The site was designed with all of their comments in mind. And one of the comments was dealt with this issue of the roadway. Their concern is they've got a ladder truck, two other, three other trucks that have to be able to get into this roadway. They have the tight turning radius in. It has to be wide enough to accommodate that turn in and wide enough to accommodate another vehicle maybe stuck. These curves into this, into Road B were designed such to handle those turns.
Did you say why he needs a ladder truck in a development like this?
They, you know, fire safety is what it is. Every house, every dwelling's gonna be sprinkled, every, I mean, the likelihood that a fire truck's ever gonna do anything but come in and flush out the, the hydrants is probably unlikely, but that's the requirement that they need to achieve.
Can we get a letter from the chief? I would just like to have, for the neighbors concerned, you know, as expressed about the scenic road, a letter from the chief, you know, stating the recommended width, I think, would be helpful for the record.
Brian?
I know this isn't a public road, but we do have, we do have road standards that this board actually recently approved. And we looked at a subdivision plan tonight for eight homes that is required to be 24 feet wide, and they're gonna be seeking a waiver to go down to 22 feet because they think that's sufficient for eight homes. I'd argue that 36 homes is certainly a taller test. And I, I don't, I would not be comfortable with an opening or a roadway that was narrower than 22 feet for two-way traffic, especially at an entrance. And I think it's just, I appreciate the concern about the historic road, but this is 36 homes. This isn't a small five-home driveway here. I mean, there's three fire hydrants internal to the site. So I think that's, this is a, this is a road, whether it's publicly owned or not.
It's 22 feet, 20 feet, Road B, and I think Road C is 20 also.
But the.
What's the throat, do you know what the throat is?
The actual throat at Brush Hill Road, outside the wall. The roadway is 22 feet. What's the curb to curb at the radius?
Wall to wall is proposed to be 32 feet.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the actual entrance.
The.
Present.
Curve to curb.
No, no, in the proposal. You have a 22-foot wall, and then that widens out to accommodate the right, right and left turns.
Right here.
Yeah, so what's that, yeah, that's the distance.
Probably close to.
30?
It's close to 40 feet. The road, the wall-to-wall opening is proposed to be 32 feet.
I think that answers one of the questions, and Tim Kernan's question is, what is the 22, what is the 32? So the 32 is wall-to-wall, the 22 is the actual pave area.
Wall, current wall-to-wall is 17.
The current wall-to-wall is 17 feet, interior. Pace off from column to column, 17 feet. Proposing to widen that to 32 feet, proposing the pavement with, at that location, to be 22 feet. It'll be flared out, be greater. You know, Brushhill Road is not a wide roadway, and the potential is you've got a large fire truck and/or delivery trucks, and you have moving, coming in and out of here, seriously, moving people in. They need adequate turning radius.
So you have five feet on one side for a sidewalk, and then you have five feet on the other side for a vehicle to...
Probably for symmetry.
Or it's for symmetry with the wall.
It's symmetry.
Any other questions from board members? So you have a few items to get to us for the next meeting. We're going to continue this to the 25th. We already have something at 7 o'clock, so...
We've got, on the 25th, we have 3:30 Brushhill at 7, and a new application, 7:30 for 11 for Brian Ave.
Okay, so then I would say 8 o'clock.
Okay, if I may request that we have the ability to begin drafting a proposed special permit?
Yes, I think that would make sense. I mean, obviously, there may be changed conditions based on the next meeting, but I think getting a draft started would make sense.
If we voted special permit, you're jumping the gun here a little bit, but you should draft it anyhow, just on the chance, just on the chance that...
I was going to say, it would be easier to know what we were voting on if we had a draft to look at.
We have an application.
We have an application.
We have an application. The draft decision, of course, we would not be voting on initially. Initially, we'd vote on the application.
I think it's fine if you go ahead and start a draft. Anything else?
And I would, I would ask the board whether, if we have a reasonable draft, if we close the hearing on the 25th, and we have a reasonable draft, whether it is reasonable to consider that you would vote to grant the special permit on the 9th of July, or whatever your first meeting in July is.
That would give us sufficient time to review the draft, assuming it is reasonable. There are not substantial changes. We could look at that. It would get, it would depend on what happens on the 25th.
Sure.
But if that's your schedule, we can certainly get into account.
That's our goal, obviously. And thank you, we appreciate your comments and your time.
Great, thank you very much. So, board members, we have, we're continuing this to 8 o'clock on the 25th, and we have a few more things on our agenda. I don't expect it to take too long. First up, I want to, a couple of you came in a little bit later, so we had started talking about the forum on the 29th. I just want to remind you that you have homework assignments. So I'm looking for, and I think Tim sent this around already, but just to reiterate it, I'm looking for no more than 20 images for each of your topics for doing the survey that we'll do at the meeting. And the other thing I'm looking for is questions, three to five questions for each of your topics. So what we're going to be doing is a presentation at the beginning to sort of introduce the process that the planning board is doing. I'll introduce each of you and talk about which topics you're working on, so that people are aware of that. We're going to do, the technical term is a visual preference survey, but it's basically a series of images to test what people like or don't like. So for example, for signs, which we were talking about earlier, we'll show different types of signs in different formats. So we'll have awning signs, we'll have blade signs, all the different types of signs in a range of images. There's usually a scale from 1 to 5, and we'll figure out what people like. They'll have a sheet of paper where they can write down their preferences, and then we'll tabulate those and see what the preferences are. We're also doing that for the other image appropriate topics that we're looking at. Then the boards will be the second part of the exercise. They'll be, we're having this at Fuller Village, it's a good room for doing this. We had a couple of open houses there during the master plan process. So we'll have the boards around. The question should be yes, no, maybe, or yes, no, not sure. We'll have dots that people can record their votes with, and again, we'll tabulate those. And this is really twofold. Part of the reason for doing this is to educate people on what we're looking at and why. Part of it is to get feedback from people in town about what they would like to see as far as this zoning goes. And then on July 9th, I expect us to have a conversation about which articles we feel we would be taking forward to this October, and which articles we would like to hold off until next October. So just keep that in mind as our goal for July. And then we'll have to, probably at our next meeting, discuss a date for the July forum, which will present the first round of the draft zoning, so...
I have a question.
Yes?
It's probably a clarification, but in looking at my assignments, I guess I would, I have no issues with the questions. I do, I guess I wonder what you would be looking for for photos on something like Granite Avenue zoning change.
Not all, actually, I think Granite Avenue zoning change, we're putting off till next October anyway, so you don't have to worry about it. That one was not of the priorities. But not all of the topics will be appropriate for photos. So if you see, yes. So that's a short answer on that. So two other pieces of business before us. One is appointments to various committees. So the planning board has a liaison to certain committees. They are the Long Term Capital Needs Committee, the Wireless Telecommunications Design Review Committee, the Milton Village Revitalization Committee, and the Master Plan Implementation Committee. And we need to appoint somebody to each of those. At the moment, we have nobody for the Master Plan Implementation Committee, probably because it hasn't been formally set up yet, although it's been approved. I'm the rep for the Milton Village Revitalization, but I would be happy to put that up for grabs. And I believe we don't currently have anybody for Capital Needs or Wireless. Do I have any volunteers who are interested? Oh, and actually, I think we may have Housing Authority as well. We should check on that. There's a, I seem to remember somebody at one point was a liaison from the Housing Authority, but I don't know if that's been changed. So, any thoughts? Any, do you want to find out more about what each committee does before we start randomly assigning people to?
All these committees presently exist?
All these committees presently exist. The Master Plan Implementation Committee hasn't been pulled together yet, but it exists as a committee, so...
If you want to stall for a minute, I can see if I can grab Bill, who might have an idea of when these committees meet.
I can totally stall for a minute. Go grab Bill. So what usually happens is the planning board liaison goes to the meetings and comes back and reports to us if there's anything that we should be concerned about. Typically, the Milton Village Revitalization Committee, for example, will meet if there's something going on in that area that the board is likely to ask for their opinion on, or that they feel they should be aware of, and then the person reports back to us. Capital Needs Committee, I believe, has been shifting a little bit in what they're doing over the last few years, so that may be a, that may be moving around as to what they do and what gets reported back. And I don't know when the last time the Wireless Design Review Committee met, so... Bill, tell us about these committees that we have our liaisons on. That's a good one. You're volunteering to that. Mike's like, that's me.
Communications Design Review Committee meets as needed, and it's just as it sounds. When we have telecommunications systems that are new or being updated, first time through, they have to go through ZBA. After the ZBA, Design Review gets it, they get to look at it. It has to do with what it looks like on the tower. Mr. Duffy has been that person since I started. It meets as needed, three times a year, maybe. Most of them are pretty, pretty much just change out. You've seen some of them that happened at the hospital, some have happened at Fort Franklin, some at 480 Adams, and some of the changes were done at 123 Granite Ave, the Legion Post. They were all built, and Curry College has two sets of them. Those are the ones we have all over town. There's a couple in the churches that are being phased out.
Actually, Mike, that does sound kind of up your alley, I mean, with the construction thing, so...
That's an easy one, what it is. It's three members on the board, one from the selectmen, one from the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, that works, all right.
How do I get notified?
Me.
I'll be on the notification list.
Okay. You have to, yeah, you're set.
The Long Term Capital, what's happening with Long Term Capital these days?
That's a, you work under the direction of Amy Dexter. I know that the appointments to it are the selectmen, the schools, consolidated facilities.
Warrant committee. They just added library at the last time.
Oh, that was a good move, yeah, that's right. I forgot about that.
DPW?
DPW is there, yes, because they were one of the biggest.
And how often do they meet?
They actually meet a lot. They meet, I believe, it's at least once a month. They meet at 4 o'clock, and they're done by, usually done by 5:30, sometimes by 5:00. When they happen, they happen quick, but they start at 4:00.
Am I hearing any volunteers for Capital at the moment?
I can't even get here.
I was going to say, that's tricky.
Most of the people in this committee must be, what, internal to the town? They work for the town. I mean, had...
I think it's about three-quarters, but the selectmen don't, the warrant committee doesn't, the...
Yeah, people get there at 4:00.
The others, they...
I heard it might be a trustee, not a staff person, I think.
All right, so let's hold off on that one for a second. Milton Village Revitalization.
I'm happy to step in for you, Emily, if you're looking to get out.
That would be great. I was thinking your experience would work well on that one.
This is the one I'm working on as well.
The problem with being chair of the planning board is it doesn't leave a whole lot of time for being liaison to other things, so, you know, that would be great.
That one actually is pretty fun, because it's a pretty...
It's a good group, it's a great group.
...group from all over town. Although you're looking at Milton Village Central Ave, the representation of the committee is from all over town. You've got real estate agents from a couple of different places. You've got John Zee, who's an architect, you've got neighborhood...
John's chairing it, right?
John chairs it.
Yeah, that's right.
Again, is that, do you notify when I need to be in town or something?
John does.
John does.
John takes care of his own list, and he's very good about it.
Make sure he knows that it's transitioned over, yeah.
When do they meet? I've actually been waiting to be asked to go to these meetings and...
I don't know. I get asked.
It was the first Monday of the month, but it was only as needed, so I think I missed three meetings, because we didn't tell him that I'd transitioned over in time. So we should make sure he knows. And actually, Tim, you should let him know that you're interested in going, so...
It hasn't, it hasn't...
It hasn't met in a while, yeah, because there hasn't been a need.
Tim can take my spot on it, because...
Look at us delegating everything.
One night.
Do we have a rep on the Housing Authority? Do I vaguely remember that? Okay, I thought there was a Housing Committee. All right, fine.
Fair Housing Committee.
Fair Housing Committee. Alex, interested in Fair Housing Committee?
I'm a, I've done that for years.
All right, so...
There's a committee that, instead of meeting here, we've actually kind of morphed it into the regional Fair Housing Committee.
Okay. So we have Alex to that, Mike on Wireless, Brian on Milton Village Revitalization. Cheryl, I am going to suggest you for the Master Plan Implementation Committee, since Brian's got a committee, and you were also on the master plan. So if you'd be interested in that?
I, I'll take it.
Four, four times a year?
Four times a year.
Is what we put in, so that's not too heavy a burden at the moment.
Do you have a sense when the other members are going to be appointed?
After we, as the planning board, vote on the master plan, which is actually going to be the next subject we talk about. So that just leaves Long Term Capital Needs, so why don't we think about that for a little bit? And people can examine their schedules, unless there's somebody who wants to come...
I thought it made it 4 o'clock.
Well, that's, I mean, that's the problem, is I can't do it.
Is it able to be told by staff or not? It has to be a member.
There's an idea. We could appoint Tim to it, Bill to it. I say Tim because I saw Bill's finger pointing, but we could...
Oh, I went that way.
Would you like to be the Long Term Capital? All right, so, everybody happy with Bill?
Yes.
Okay, so I would accept a motion to appoint the following people to the following committees. Bill to Long Term Capital, Mike to Wireless Telecommunication, Brian to Milton Village, Alex to Fair Housing, and Cheryl to the Master Plan Implementation. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
All right.
Excellent. All right.
Which one, do I put you down?
I'm not on one. I've got the, the planning board. That'll keep me out of trouble. All right, so then the final item on our agenda is the master plan. Now, at the last meeting, Alex gave us a set of comments that he had previously submitted, some of which had been made and some of which had not, and he had identified which had not. Subsequently, he and I have talked and, about the remainder of the changes, and Alex, you're going to fill everybody in on that.
What I suggested, rather than go through 60 changes and see what people think at 11 o'clock, is, Tim has printed out the pages on which I suggest changes. I will write out what I suggest be done on those pages, and then we'll erox them in color, because I'll deal with a red pen, and we'll distribute them. And then you can take a look at it and see if they, see if there are any ones you want to, you want to discuss at the next two weeks, not the 3rd meeting.
No, the 25th, yeah. I want to leave the 18th as much open for there as possible. We'll, we'll talk about the public forum at the end, but other than that, the 25th. So I think that's, that should be, if everybody's agreeable with that, that should be fine. Some of Alex's changes are matters of fact that we should be able to tick off and say yes, 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 but some of them relate to the implementation portions of it, the implementation recommendations. And so rather than just change those, because those suggestions have not gone through the rest of the public process, I want to make sure that board members, all of us, have a chance to respond and raise any concerns, or say, hey, that one's fine, let's do that. So I would expect that we would be getting these back in time to review them prior to the 25th. We can look at them on the 25th if everything's good to go, and we're, you know, we go through them, whatever we're happy with, we vote, and then whatever we've ended up voting, Tim will make as changes in the final document, so. And we should get that done, but I would like to, let me say this, I would very strongly like to have the master plan come to a vote on the 25th, so let's aim for that and go.
Great.
And other than that, I don't think I have anything else, so...
Just a quick update. I saw the next meeting notes, next meeting dates. I alerted you that I will not be here on the 18th. I will watch the hearing.
Yes.
And July 9th, I will be on vacation. Depending on whether there's significant votes, I may be willing to commute back, but just wanted to give you the heads up.
Okay, and so July 9th, I don't believe we have, do we have anything scheduled for July 9th yet?
Just the reference to when you're...
8:65.
Yes. Well, but we haven't actually scheduled it. They've just said that they would like it done by July 9th, so we could do it potentially on July 8, for example, whatever.
Well, I'm not going to be here the whole week, so...
All right, fine.
I'm just letting you know.
Okay.
I'd like to be able to, if I need to come back, I'll come back.
Okay, all right.
You should be on the next one.
Correct.
But you will review the, and you have not missed a hearing of Thayer prior.
That's correct.
Okay, good, then we should be all set. Anything else? If not, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
A motion?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I agree.